Or transmitting. Okay. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee Agendas, SC Agenda 202021. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments four, that's numeral four, scmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. No spaces in comments for SC meeting. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comment agenda item is addressed. Your email must include your first and last name and home address in order for it to be read. In the event of teachers who do not live in Maynard, please just let me know what you teach and which school you're in. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone who wishes to has the opportunity to be heard. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, it is suggested that you limit it to approximately 350 words. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record regardless. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizens' comments agenda is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional, public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. And tonight, if time allows, I know that several people have asked to submit more than one comment. So if time allows, I will read the second comments, but that depends on how many we receive. All right. So I will now open the meeting with roll call. Mary Branley.
Here.
Jessica Clark.
Here.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
And Lydia Clancy here. All right. Meeting is called to order. We, the first item on the agenda is just a quick chairperson's report. I don't really have much. I just have a quick, I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday. We needed to present our position on the $265,422 that we are being asked to cut from our budget to help make up the revenue shortfall in the town's receipts due to COVID-related business closures this past spring. The school committee asked for relief in paying the $265,422 and requested that all or part be taken from the general stabilization fund. Our request was submitted for the record but not considered in the vote to accept draft F, sorry, draft Article F for the special town meeting warrant because it was not submitted enough in advance. That warrant will now go to the finance committee for consideration and comment. And that is all I have. So now we can go to the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. Glad to be here. We have a couple of smaller items, the first being the Green Meadow Roof Update. I just want to thank Justin DiMarco and Kyle Brainerd for all their work supervising this at this time. If you don't know, the work has begun at the Green Meadow School for the roof, and there's a timeline attached, and they will be working over the next couple of weeks in terms of demo and then fixing the roof with an estimated completion date sometime between August 24th and September 2nd at this time. That's sort of weather-dependent, if you will. So we're glad that that's getting done, and that should be, should make that building fully accessible by the anticipated opening of school. The next piece would be the Director of Building Operations, which we have been waiting for. I think this conversation probably started long before I did, maybe a year ago. So with that said, we are really excited that we've been able to post. We've actually gotten applicants, and the interviewing process started today. Again, Justin DiMarco representing the DPW and Kyle as well, and Wayne White, our business manager, have been conducting the interviews. So that process has officially begun, and I will be happy to come back in the very near future and hopefully introduce a Director of Building Operations for the Maynard Public Schools. And budget update, I don't, we don't have a budget update yet. We're, FY20 is about to be closed out, and the governor's budget, as you know, is not been submitted or approved. So we don't have a new budget for this coming year. We're working on the appropriated budget at that time. But I'm.
We're meeting next week anyway as a subcommittee, so.
Correct.
Great.
We can talk more about it then, absolutely. Hopefully, we'll have more information from the governor at that time.
All right. So then, moving on to citizens' comments. We have many. Colleen, are all of them in the folder, or should I go and read through?
There may be a couple of new ones that have just come in.
I have put everything to date in that document.
It is, okay.
Including the one, the teacher that submitted twice, both, or I don't know if there was another one from him this week.
There's a couple that came in just like within the past hour also.
You got those two, okay, great. Now I'm trying, here we go. First, from Vivian Veros, who is a pre-K teacher at Green Meadow. If the school committee and the district were to choose a remote model, could the school committee inquire and discuss how the possible loss of preschool tuition revenue coming from community families might affect the 2020-21 budget? What are the solutions that might help resolve this deficit if it were to happen? So we're reading comments, but we won't be answering them. But I can assure you, Vivian, that if Brian does have an answer to that, he'll address it in his presentation. And if he doesn't, he will get back to you. I'm sure that they are working on that. He and I have talked about that before. Next is James Trudeau, Maynard High School, French and Spanish teacher. Dear school committee members, so many times in life, we are reminded of the saying, "Safety first." Simply put, this is the defining moment of a generation in which we must put safety first. I urge you to stand on the right side of history and put our children's safety first. Make the decision for our schools to do remote learning. We need to be able to look back at ourselves months and years from now and know that we did not put children's lives in danger. Thank you for your time. Yours truly, James Trudeau. The next one is Elizabeth Albata from One Taylor Road. Dear school committee members, hybrid model costs and risks outweigh any benefits. Here are some examples of what we'll have to spend money on to go hybrid. Retrofitting and upgrading HVAC systems, sanitation systems, more custodians, and overtime for these custodians, classroom cleaning supplies, bottled water to replace bubblers, stocks of masks, N95 masks and plastic gowns for nurses, special PPE for custodians, toilet lids in staff and student bathrooms, hall monitors to prevent vaping in the high school, paper towels to replace blowers, long-term subs for teachers that can't come back in the building, subs for the more frequent teacher absences. Teachers and children will have to be out if they show any symptom of COVID. A lot of illnesses share symptoms with COVID. Subs to take classes from teachers waiting for COVID test results up to a week. Subs who can take over for teachers who contract COVID will be out for weeks, months, or permanently. Additional nurses to staff the isolation rooms. You will hear lots of rational-sounding arguments about our low numbers. These are the result of not having school in session. The disease, this disease spreads exponentially. Forty percent of people with COVID are asymptomatic spreaders. People who have to be hospitalized with COVID can expect to have lifelong disabilities and/or heart, lung, and kidney damage. Others, even when asymptomatic, asymptomatic, have suffered strokes. Immunity from it only lasts for about two to months after recovery. These risks to the people we love are too great. The ineffective mitigation of risk will cost us too much money. What happens in our school next year? How many teachers will have to be cut as a result of the cost of choosing hybrid this year? Superintendent Haas has already said publicly several times that we can't maintain the hybrid model once flu season hits due to lack of sub-coverage. When we open schools, they will be the places where people spread and catch COVID. People will suffer lifelong illnesses and/or die as a result, hoping that it won't happen here, and all the money we spend on that hope won't be enough. Hello, my name is Jay Levine, and I am a social studies teacher at Maynard High School. This is my second year teaching in Maynard, and while I'm excited to get back to the work of teaching our wonderful students, I would be remiss if I didn't express my deep concerns over going back to in-person teaching in the fall. With positive rates of COVID increasing in many parts of the state and with still so much that is unknown about this virus, it seems foolhardy to bring so many people together in an enclosed space for a prolonged period of time. On a personal level, I have a three-year-old child, and my partner and I rely on my 71-year-old mother for childcare. Needless to say, I don't wish to bring this virus home and jeopardize the health of anyone in my family. I ask the school committee to consider all the factors at play. While the teachers certainly want to get back to working with our students, I speak for many when I say that we should not be placed in harm's way. Teaching and learning is of utmost importance, but the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and families should always be the first priority. Thank you for reading, Jay Levine. From Melissa McPhail, third-grade teacher at Green Meadow. She asked me to read this really fast because it's long, and she knew I was going to cut her off if it was longer than three minutes. So I'm going to read it fast. For those who might not know me, my name is Melissa McPhail. I am a 23-year resident of Maynard and have taught in Green Meadow for the past 14 years. I'm a veteran early childhood educator with 27-plus years of experience. I've taught over 560 students, grades K through 3, with varying needs and abilities thus far in my career, 280 of those here in Maynard. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Education, a Master's Degree in Reading Instruction, and a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Study in Administration. I love my job as a classroom teacher with my whole heart. Long before this pandemic, beginning on the first day of school, I would ask my students, "What is my number-one job?" Naturally, they would skeptically look at me and say, "To teach us?" And I would tell them, "Teaching is my second job, but my first and foremost, my number-one job is to keep them safe." I would remind them of this often throughout our days together. Ask any of my former students, "What did Mrs. McPhail always say was her number-one job?", and they will respond to "keep us safe." There is nothing in the world I would like more than to wake up from this COVID nightmare, realizing it was just a horrific dream, and return safely to my students' smiling faces in person in a couple of weeks. But it is not a nightmare. This COVID virus is reality. I am no longer in a position to look my students in their eyes, face-to-face, in person, with masks, face masks six feet apart, sanitizer, Plexiglas, no shared materials, no touching, et cetera, and convey that message with any amount of confidence. I cannot keep them safe in that environment right now. I understand you all, you have all been doing your due diligence and gathering pertinent information from all folders to make the best information-informed decision possible in the face of this unprecedented situation. While our MEA membership expressed an 84% desire for a fully remote start and the MESA 73%, I wanted to personally reach out as an experienced professional and convey my opinion why I believe we need to begin with a full remote platform versus the hybrid model before a recommendation and vote take place this evening. The total number of youth cases has almost doubled in the last month in our country. Almost 180,000 new case, child cases were reported from between July 9th and August 6th, raising the total number to more than 380,000, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. As of last Sunday here in Massachusetts, there have been 7,554 confirmed COVID cases of people 19 years old or younger, with 122 of those cases requiring hospitalization. Maynard is not an isolated bubble, insulated from the activity and cases in the communities all around us and beyond. Just because the COVID cases, COVID case numbers within our small town may trend low does not indicate we are free and clear from this virus and its wrath. It has been stated to our community's families that there will always be a remote option for their children if they feel they need it for their situation or are worried about keeping safe. But the same cannot be said for Maynard educators. We cannot be guaranteed our choice of whether to teach in person or remotely within the proposed hybrid model. Firefighters train and practice to become professionals. They participate in professional development and earn specialized certificates of merit along the way. Their job is to provide the community with a service, in the simplest terms, to put out fires and protect citizens. There is an assumed, there is the assumed inherent danger and risk for their life in this career they chose. Educators train and practice to become professionals. They participate in professional development and earn specialized certificates of merit along the way. Their job is to provide the community with a service, in simplest terms, to provide academic instruction to school-aged citizens. Yet with no choice, societal events and pressures have led to the expectation educators assume, led to the expectation educators assume there may be danger and risk to their life in this career beyond academic instruction, given the ALICE protocols of active shooter drills, active shooters, fire drills, et cetera, in order to serve their students and families. Is this?
Yeah, it's three.
Going longer than three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Mrs. McPhail. I still have six more paragraphs to read, but the full thing will be submitted in, in the record.
And we all received it, so we have all seen it.
Right, yeah, we've all read it. Good evening. My name is Helen Gerondo, and I live at 10 Field Street. I am a graduate of Maynard High, and I am just about to start my career as a registered nurse. I'm writing to express my concerns about Maynard Schools returning to in-person teaching this fall. Until there's a vaccine, many of the teachers who I have come to know and love, including my mother, will be at risk of contracting a disease that has unpredictable consequences and is potentially fatal. Nurses, like teachers, are essential workers. However, most hospitals are equipped with proper testing and ventilation, and healthcare workers can have better control of their patients' environments while in the hospital. There are too many variables that are out of schools' control to make in-person learning safe for both the teachers and the students. From my experience, Maynard teachers love and truly embrace being with their students, and I have seen them go above and beyond for them, as well as fellow peers and staff members. In this case, I fear our community may be asking too much of our beloved teachers. No one wants it to be this way, but I do believe that remote learning in the fall will give schools a much better chance of reuniting in person in the spring. Maynard Schools teach young students the importance of factual evidence, and they foster environments that are open to healthy debates. I believe the Maynard community is stronger together, and I trust that my neighbors and friends will recognize that the lessons teachers provide us extend beyond the classroom. Thank you. Elizabeth Albata, One Taylor Road. Education is supposed to be a common good. If it is put, if it is putting any number of people's lives and livelihoods at risk, then it is no longer fulfilling its societal role. If a school becomes a place where people have to risk lives, health, or the financial burdens of unaffordable medical costs, then it is not doing its social duty. We need to figure out how to serve people for the common good. Right now, that means a creative and robust remote program of studies and family outreach.
I am John Ogden, the communications WAVM teacher of five years and the 2019 MEF Teacher of the Year. I have tremendous love for Maynard, its school system, and especially its students. I love Maynard because its people are real, its children balanced, and its parents understanding. I work hard for this community, and I believe that that has paid off for the students in the town. WAVM has one of the most respected programs in New England. We obtained an official vocational license, providing students greater opportunities for success, and countless young people have enhanced their lives in my classes. While co-chairing the Student Government and Maynard Rotary Club, we helped by raising money and donating our goods and time. I continually strive to make Maynard a better place to live. So I'm disappointed that we may place hundreds of people in an outdoor space during a pandemic. I'm disappointed nobody has given me a call to inquire about my underlying health conditions. I'm disappointed there's no chance to speak with parents to explain that I am, that I too am struggling with how to get daycare for my babies. Am I to believe that parents don't care about my health, my life, the lives of my infant daughters, all in an effort to make sure their children come first? No, that's not the parents of Maynard I have come to know and respect after all these years. If given the chance, we would have figured out a reasonable remote plan, safe for all people involved, probably within an hour. If in-person jeopardizes the health, life of one person, then we can't go back. That is the code we live by in Maynard. It is called community because we all look out for one another, even when things are hard. COVID is here, and we don't know what it can do in the long term. That is, if you survive it. My conscience would struggle if one student got sick. My heart would break if one grandparent perished, and my soul would cease if I infected my babies. Please think of everybody. Much love.
Dear Superintendent Haas and members of the Maynard School Committee, my name is Diane DeShellis of 43 Mill Street, and I am a parent of two boys in the Maynard Public School System. I am also a special education teacher in Lexington, and my husband is a counselor in Bedford. Maynard's hybrid plan of a mere eight hours a week in-person instruction is not worth the risk of our children's and teachers' lives. We are all aware that we will be fully remote at some point. Let's plan a better remote learning model versus the emergency one that occurred in the spring. Although a remote-only plan presents a challenge for working families, a hybrid plan will be far more unreliable due to illnesses and cohort quarantines. A remote-only plan makes sense because it will be consistent and predictable, and if there is anything that we need during this time, it's predictability. The DESI's map identifying which schools should consider hybrid or remote only demonstrates the lack of leadership and realistic thinking needed during this crisis. The virus does not have boundaries. Most people do not work in the cities and towns they live in. By returning to school in a hybrid model, the transmission of the virus will be exponential. This is a time with many uncertainties and little control. The virus is not something we can control, but we can control our actions and do what is best for our community. Please support a remote-only plan. Hello, I'm Lindy Geer of 28 McKinley Street in Maynard. Thank you for the time, expertise, and thoughtfulness in creating these plans. The positives far outweigh the two ideas that I'm sharing today. First, please reexamine the Phase II hybrid plan to have students eat in the cafeteria. CDC's recent guidance is clear about this and focuses on the safety of the majority while also protecting kids with allergens. I think she meant allergies. CDC's message, how should schools serve meals to students and staff? In addition to having nutrition services staff continue to follow recommended food safety practices for preparing and serving food, as feasible, schools should have students and staff eat meals in classrooms while maintaining social distancing as much as possible instead of in a communal dining hall or cafeteria. This higher-risk part of the plan places the larger Maynard community at high risk. Why? Because Maynard is like a small city with more than half living in homes under 13 square feet. That means one bathroom and rooms that barely permit, rarely permit, six feet of distancing. Hence, a higher likelihood of kids and employees' families catching COVID when an outbreak occurs. Let's avoid this by following Northbridge's plan or Lincoln Sudbury on this. Second idea, a separate Algebra I class for eighth graders may be in jeopardy at the Fowler School. Math is the language of science, finance, and engineering. STEM careers dominate the career world today, and that trend will continue. By not providing a full Algebra I course, you will be making it extremely difficult for these kids to pursue STEM careers as they'll be one to two years behind in math when they start college. This becomes a societal divide with wealthier families paying for private Algebra I. Not having stimulating opportunities like Algebra I during the middle school years is a main reason why children are leaving Maynard Schools for more stimulating charter and private schools. We are already losing public school funding to the tune of $1 million due to prior middle school decisions. Don't add to that. Thank you for being courageous leaders tonight despite the many political pushes. This next one is from Ken Estabrook, 28 McKinley. I would strongly urge the schools to phase in different groups of students over the first weeks or two. First week or two. For example, perhaps start kids with special needs or ELL as well as pre-K and kindergarten students first as they will likely appreciate the slower, less tense transition than how first, fourth, sixth, and ninth graders, who will all be new to their schools or a different educational model at Fowler, and will want to learn the ins and outs of those new routines more deeply. Then phase everyone else in as you see fit. Phases would allow administrators and staff to see what's working and what needs to be fine-tuned before feeling overwhelmed with the enormity of the entire effort. It would also significantly decrease the amount of anxiety of both staff and students. Phasing in would enable teachers who are responsible for both hybrid and online teaching to incrementally get used to it rather than being hit by a tidal wave of new ways of doing things. Rolling this out well, and we need to do it well because lives are at stake, will take focus. That focus will be splintered dozens of different ways if all kids return at once. We should focus on reducing risk, so let's phase in more broadly and deeply.
And is that it? Those are all the comments we have? All right. I'm just going to check and make sure I haven't received anything else. Okay. Just checking. Yep, got them all. Okay. So that concludes.
Hi.
Hello. Cheryl Dean needs to mute.
We have a young attendee who wants to speak.
All right.
Lydia, I just, there was one other teacher at the high school. I don't know if maybe, did Jeanne LaBelle not want hers read in public?
It didn't say for public comment.
Didn't.
Yeah, it didn't.
I think it was just to us.
Perfect, okay, just checking. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So that concludes citizens' comment. Before we open up the reopening plan discussion, I just want to say a couple of things. The administration, reopening task force committees, the ad hoc reopening safety committee, and every other person working unnoticed in the background to support them have worked tirelessly for months to provide us with the recommendation the school committee must either approve or reject tonight. I ask that you listen, and I'm talking to the people out there, all the parents, all the teachers, everyone. I ask that you listen to all of the information presented and consider it with the following in mind. We are currently in the middle of a world pandemic, the likes of which our country hasn't seen in our lifetimes. The predicament we all find ourselves in is through no fault of our own. Every member of the school committee has done their due diligence by informing themselves of the most recent medical and scientific data, research, and advisories. None of us is a scientist, epidemiologist, doctor, or statistician. We are volunteers. We have not received any training for making as consequential a decision as this. Four of us have school-aged children, three of us are sped parents, two of us.
Two of us are S I, Spanish Immersion, parents. Each of us will vote according to our conscience and what we consider to be the best option for Maynard students in light of the information that we have available to us tonight. There is not a single plan that we could approve that would please satisfy or support everyone. This is a lose-lose situation for everyone. Compassion, patience, and understanding are crucial if we are going to get through the next month, few months together. And with that, Brian, I open to you.
Let me first thank everyone for their comments. It's very clear from the comments that everyone cares deeply about the town, about the school system, about the staff, about the students, and their safety. That's clear from all the comments, no matter which recommendation and model of instruction you were leaning towards. This has been probably one of the most difficult decisions that I've ever had to make. And it's been an inclusive experience. It's based on health and safety of students, families, and staff. That's our guiding principle. And normally, our guiding principle is, how do we educate kids? And that's what we focus on, is the education of kids and is it good for kids? This is bigger than that, and it's broader than that. That's still at our core. But in addition to that, we're focused on health and safety. Because if we don't have healthy kids, then they can't learn. And if we don't have healthy teachers, they can't teach. So this has been an extremely difficult decision. As Lydia mentioned, we've had reopening committees, both at the building level, at the district level. We focused on safety, technology, curriculum. I could go on. It's over a hundred people have been involved in analyzing the data, making suggestions, trying to figure this out and make education work in a new way, in a new world. We've looked at guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Quite frankly, we expected more prescriptive guidance in April and May. It hasn't come yet. They've given us a lot of data, and we've used it. But the exact direction has been left to local school committees to make. We've used information from the CDC, the Department of Public Health, our own local health agents, our townspeople. We've also done parent Zoom meetings and parent emails, parent surveys. And I can tell you, we are, I think, right before this meeting, I checked, and we had almost twelve hundred respondents to our parent email, parent survey, excuse me. And that survey, it trends toward hybrid. You've already heard that our staff, both teachers and support staff, their surveys trend toward remote. There's no right or wrong there. Those are just where people are right now. If we go back to, and if I go back to, health and safety first and foremost. This is a new experience for all of us, and I do believe it's gonna be short-term. And that's sort of a relative term. It could be this year. So with that, and this is probably why there are two hundred and fifty-seven people on this call, or you just really like school committee, and I, which, I like that. I'm glad for the attendance. I will make the recommendation, and in a moment, I'll ask Colleen to put up a, share a screen with a grid, and I will recommend a remote beginning to this school year with a phased-in approach moving forward. So what that means is to open school. It will be a remote opening except for some of our at-risk students. So we do have some students that really can't function without coming to school, or they need some specific services that we can't provide at home. And again, this would be if they're comfortable coming to school and our staff are comfortable teaching them. These are very low numbers. We're talking one-on-one, one-on-two, not classes of people. Not fifty kids in a building. These are very low numbers. And the thinking behind this is we reassess the situation every six weeks or so, and it's an about. And if the numbers, so in my eyes, we're working on a positive formula here. We start remote, and if the numbers stay low, both in Maynard and around Maynard and in the state, and I will like to say, when the governor decides it's okay to actually eat in a restaurant at more than twenty-five percent, because even our hybrid model has us above twenty-five percent. So when the governor of the state decides that it's okay to do that, we wanna move forward. And then we would, as somebody, one of the people who made a comment, talked about a phased-in approach, that is the method we're taking. We're just taking it from the positive. So we're gonna start remote, low incidence or no incidence, everybody's healthy. We're gonna phase in starting with the youngest students, the pre-K and K. And moving forward, we reassess. The numbers continue to stay low or nonexistent, and the message is we can move on. Then we open the rest of Green Meadow at that time. We wait and watch a few more weeks, and I'm using approximately six weeks. We look at Fowler, and we phase that in in grades four and five. Then we move on to grades six through eight, and now we're sharing a screen to make this easier. I'm still gonna talk, but you can look at that. I'm talking Phase Three Fowler Middle School. That's where I am. And then, again, the numbers stay low. We move on to the high school. Now, the high school has mixed classes. It doesn't work to phase in. So if we're, you know, twelve, sixteen weeks into this, nobody's sick, not in Maynard, not in the geographic area, the governor's opening the state, we'd open the high school on a hybrid model. Hopefully, I mean, the goal, as you've heard from teachers tonight, parents out there, and I've heard from them, they want to teach your children. They want to teach them in person. So the goal is Phase Four, which is green, which is reopen pre-K two-twelve in the new normal, which would be safety protocols, but it would be in-person education. So just to recap, since you've all been waiting for that before, what's the recommendation? I know it's been a big decision. I'm recommending that we start remote. So, school committee, I would ask.
Discussion?
Wanna just call on everyone, just maybe it might be helpful?
Sure, I'll go down. All right, so starting with Mary Branley.
I am about as happy with this plan as I could be with any plan. I feel, and I too have heard, I was saying earlier that I've heard from numerous parents that the hybrid was where they, you know, would prefer to go. But I'm feeling that this is very responsible, and Brian and Jennifer and everyone else. And I know I'm on the safety committee too. But this, I really, I feel like we're getting to a good phased-in method of getting our students back safely into the school. So I am definitely feeling as good as I can feel about this plan.
Awesome. Jessica?
I'm so appreciative for this plan. I'm a huge believer in trusting experts in anything. And if our teachers are telling us that they need more time, I trust them. I know we are so lucky in our community. I'm gonna cry, because this is like such, it's been so hard. Like, honestly, because like Mary said, you're hearing from parents, and they're, they want one thing. But I just, in all my sleepless nights and data research and all of this, I just keep going back to, the teachers in our community love our kids. They care about our children. They know what they're doing. We, we need to trust in them. And if eighty, seventy-three to eighty-four percent of them are telling us that we need more time, we need to do this right, we need to have a smart plan in place, we need to hear their voices, and we need to accept that, and we need to all stick together and really support each other. And I, I just want to acknowledge the integrity that has gone into this and really appreciate the fact that we have such a great administration in place, who has really been so thoughtful and strategic and clearly have empathy, which to me is one of the most important traits that anybody can have. So I am all in, whether or not everybody agrees with me. I really appreciate, I really appreciate this. So, thank you.
Awesome. Beth Lynn?
First of all, I wanna congratulate, I think this is your first school committee Zoom cry, Jessica, so congratulations. I... I say that in a joking way, but it's serious because it's very real in it. And it, this is all stuff that matters and we care very much about. And so I appreciate that, that's, I appreciate those feelings. So I had made, when I wasn't at the meeting last week, so I had a statement. So I do wanna pull a few things from that. I'm gonna try to just keep it distinct. The bottom line is that I support what is the recommendation at Superintendent Haas and the schools together. We've seen this process that started early, where they informed these committees and started looking at reopening and what that was gonna look like. And it's got so many different representatives. And to echo Jessica's saying, that I just really trust their consideration of this. I guess the bottom line, when I was looking at everything, there's this quote that I have in my email. "In a real sense, all life is interrelated. All people are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. I can never be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. And you can never be what you ought to be until I am what I ought to be." This is the interrelated structure of reality. Martin Luther King Jr. said that, but I actually think of Covid right now as bringing that to the forefront. And particularly, in the community of Maynard, we live this interrelatedness every day. And when we have these small circles of people that just, they overlap, we're all excited because our high school is our in sports and band and theater and W A V M. And, and we thrive on that interrelatedness. But I also think that recognizing that and recognizing the closeness of this community that for us, starting hybrid right now makes sense, and then seeing where we go from there. And the biggest thing that was, there are a couple of things that are really hard for me in considering that, knowing I've worked with the American Academy, I worked with the American Academy of Pediatrics National during the day, and we've been having these conversations. But even at the national level, there's not consensus on the way forward. I'm sitting in these meetings with these, the national experts, who just are talking about this in different ways and grappling with it. They're calling it thirteen thousand natural experiments, because every district in the country, there was about thirteen thousand public school districts in the country, if you didn't know. And so I think that the biggest things are knowing that we could have the building open to be able to provide at-risk students with support. Because I just feel like, I know it's gonna be really hard for my, one of my children, my nine-year-old, just the way that we had to do remote learning this spring. And I know that you're really being thoughtful about how to consider it. It was very difficult. But for families of children with some of those, that are, have some of those support needs, I just, I don't even know what that's been like, but I've heard. And to have the option to try to help some, support some of those students in one-on-one or small groups, and I, that right there is huge. And knowing we could, we're gonna phase in and keep looking at the data and keep considering it. I like, I like the metric of every six weeks. That makes sense to me. Even the hybrid model wasn't going to, it was two half-days a week, so it wasn't going to solve the working parent issue. Would have mitigated it a little bit, but... So I really appreciate the direction, that just the complete and utter integrity, what you've done this. We are yellow right now on the metrics that DESI put out, which means that they said you could go hybrid or remote. And we're not alone in choosing remote right now. So I, I support this. I desperately want all of our students to be back in school and engaged in learning. I understand the desperation of so many families in different ways and whatever you feel like you, like what you would choose, and actually what I would personally just want to choose. But I just don't think we have this figured out. And we have to keep everyone safe right now until we understand more and until we can see what's happening as we go into the fall. So that's what I say. And I think we need to advocate. That's the other thing with the government. I like to send some things out. I've been receiving something that, for ways to be able to advocate as families to get the funding we need and the guidance and the support to be able to get there. So that, because we all desperately want to be reopening in person. Oh, one last thing. I really love the idea of being able to do like, if we could do also, I heard that you were considering finding ways that you could start the year. The other thing to mitigate is it's so hard to know, get to know each other, especially students in transition. So being able to consider having like outdoor greetings or whatever it may be at the start of the year in smaller groups, so there's a connecting. That was the one other thing that I was really felt we would, being able to mitigate that. And I know that for some of the younger set, it's gonna be a lot more difficult too. And they would be some of the first phased in, once we could do some in person. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Natasha?
I have just a couple of sentences, and then I do have a couple of questions. You know, similar to everyone's point, these have been some of the most challenging times for me. And I just wanna thank Superintendent Haas and his team for the really thoughtful and comprehensive recommendation you've provided. I know that any, any one moment of loss I've had, I know you and your team have equally weighed this burden and carried this burden these past few months. And so, so thank you. I trial by fire for you in your transition to Maynard. But I just wanted to first take a moment to do that. I also wanted to just say, I'm a parent first. I myself am considered high-risk. I understand, crap, I understand the many pressures that this Covid world brings upon everybody. I know that there are people that I care about very deeply that will maybe not pleased with our thoughts after tonight. And for those people that I feel like I failed, I just wanna apologize. I cannot do better for you and your family. I never thought that I would be in a position to have to consider the value and the risk of what is safe and what it means for our schools in a Covid world. I've read endless statistics and reports per month, and my community is more than just statistics alone. One of the things that really carries a lot for me is weighing the, the physical health of staff and their apprehensions of returning to work for folks that are not deemed essential personnel by the state against the mental and emotional needs of so many at-risk students. And that's been probably for me, one of the hardest things to overcome. And I know it's an impossible equation. But either way, it's a very painful one. So anyway, I do wish that we would have gotten guidance from DESI earlier. The metrics, I feel, is very last minute. I would love to hear more about how our border health has reviewed the metrics and either values that in the reopening efforts or if they're, if the border health feels that there needs to be more meat to that evaluation beyond what the metric provided. All right, so now to my questions. So I wanted to, looking at the recommendation, it is the remote plan does differ than the draft remote plan that was shared with the public previously. And I just wanted to understand, and I think you talked about it, but I wanted to just make sure I'm understanding, the at-risk that you talked about that would be getting onsite, does that include, are you saying that would be special education? Because I know that there is high-needs groups, and I just wanted to get clarity on, on that a little bit. I don't think I saw special education as considered in conjunction with the high risk, because those could technically be different populations?
We use that term as an inclusive term. So the at-risk group would include the special education students.
Okay, okay. So there is, there will be, even with the full remote, there will be onsite services for those that are deemed that DESI or had, I know there's a formula, like the seventy-five percent high needs that was provided by DESI. So I just wanted to just get confirmation on that. And a little bit of understanding on the scientific basis for the six-week reassessment phase or between phases, and why, why six weeks versus four weeks or a smaller interval, considering that so much, if we're doing well, if we're having a sustained piece, why would we not wanna think about... why would we not want to think about looking at it in four weeks?
It's a good question, and that's why it says about six weeks. We I think the team was feeling like we needed to give it enough time to really watch the numbers and watch the data. As you can see in Maynard, one what I would call a small exposure in July brought us, you know, seven confirmed or probable cases in three. So the numbers vary quickly. And 14 days is is the timeframe that they're looking at. So the six weeks allowed that to happen a couple of times to make sure we were on solid, healthy ground to move students back in because we didn't want to do it too quickly to then say, oops, and now we have to go back and forth because that's too many transitions and too challenging.
Okay, thank you. So that's not a firm six weeks is what I'm hearing. We could potentially revisit sooner than six weeks.
We could.
Okay. And then the pre-K. Knowing that the pre-K paid tuition and knowing that in the spring, this was certainly an issue that was came up where a lot of pre-K, not the ones that are getting services by Maynard, but ones that do pay utilize pre-K often for childcare. How do we, what are our thoughts around a plan to address that? Because I know that there was, you know, tuition implications that many people felt that they didn't want to pay for tuition. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about what your thoughts are about that, or if we would be getting a separate recommendation possibly at our next meeting.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
No, 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 I just, I know that that's that's one piece of the many pieces, so like then that was a a pretty time-consuming piece in the spring. So I just wanted to recognize that that is something that in the remote environment that doesn't always work for pre-K. And and how we we can be thoughtful of that as we're rolling in this out.
Great question, and we are taking that into consideration, and we'll have recommendations in the near future about that.
Okay. And I think that the only thing that I'm I guess I would be concerned about is there, you know, where we are in our, where Maynard is showing, because a lot of it, you know, a lot of the surrounding towns are doing hybrid. Maynard right now is one, like the numbers have have gone back to trending down, and we all, we do have, I know it is yellow from the previous data. But I wonder what in the four weeks, because I really liked reading the metrics in which you would be or the the data points that you would be reassessing. The the infection rates, the positive rates, discussion with them. So those are all very important. Is there updates that the community can get on an ongoing basis of of that in a more consolidated way without seeking it out in different pieces? Because they're all not always in in one place, just so they can understand where the trajectory of of the, you know, the decision-making, you know, is trending.
So we can look, I know right now the Maynard, the town of Maynard website posts cases based on every day, they update those. We can look at these and see if there's an a site that we can link to that updates on a consistent basis, which I'm sure there is, given that this gets reported out in the Boston Globe, and it gets reported out in the news pretty frequently. We just have to identify that and then we can share that on our website.
Yeah, because I like like the infection rate is another piece that's, you know, somewhere else. And so I know there's a lot of different areas where this information comes from. So I think that's really, let me just go through the rest. I think everything else was pretty much answered, and it just really it was hard, you know, looking at the numbers that you shared with us, the results of the the survey that went out recently. I mean, we're clearly a community that's torn, you know. You have 63% of families who want to go hybrid, and you have 83% of staff who are scared. And I I can't imagine how you really align those different opposite ends of the spectrum in a way, or how we will, because at some point it is, obviously, we may need to revisit this. And and I and I just worry about, you know, that consideration as well, because if things don't, if things are consistently online with where they are right now, that might not mitigate the fear that staff have because there might not be a vaccine until, you know, a year from now, potentially. And and some people are, you know, are waiting for that. So it's just, it's just a lot of aspects that I I really appreciate how thoughtful you've been trying to to be. And anyway, so just thank you for everybody in the public, you know, for for really pouring your hearts out in many different ways in our parent sessions and your emails, sharing about your parent, your family experiences. You know, it's it's been very touching in many ways, and it's hard to to realize that that these are, these are the decisions that we're we're having to make tonight. So so anyway, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, guys, all. Brian, I really appreciate this plan. I really do. You you and I have met several times over the last few weeks, and we would sit and go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And well, what if we did this? What if we did this? Oh, but we can't because of this, or we could do this, but then what happens if this, this, and this? And you were struggling so hard, so hard to meet the needs of the students and the families while respecting the concerns of the teachers and and I know that you've put a lot of time and thought into this plan. I think even up until today, you were still considering things, like you still weren't settled with, okay, I'm not maybe we can do this better, maybe we can do this better. But I think what we have for right now, we can't do any better. We honestly can't. And as a parent of a student and as a parent of a sped student, my struggle was with making sure the kids who really, really needed the in-person support got it. But I also really wanted to honor the teachers and their feelings and how concerned they were. And this decision was so difficult. I read so many different articles and and documents, and I was up until two or three o'clock in the morning every night for the last two and a half, three weeks just working on this decision and all of the policies that we now need to consider and either alter or replace or, you know, suspend in order to support this decision that we make tonight. And it's a lot of work, and I think people really don't fully understand or appreciate the intricacy of every little moving piece and all of the people and situations and conditions that needed to be considered. And so I really applaud the work that you and Jennifer and Charles and Jeff and Wayne and everyone else has done in putting this together because frankly, this has sucked eggs. This whole entire situation is horrendous. Should never have been put on us, but it was, and I think you've handled it beautifully. So thank you very much for that. And I will now entertain, unless Natasha, you had a question or a comment?
I actually, I saw through my notes that I found, but I didn't want to. It was more about, and I think, hold on, there's a lot of last minute going back, but I just wanted to re-ask this. Hold on. So I know that there might be instances where staff either don't have maybe Wi-Fi, have bad Wi-Fi or something at home. Or there could be staff that maybe have risk situations, or are they able to come into the building to teach remotely if they prefer? Is it a choice they're able to do?
Yes. So to answer that, so we're not closing the buildings. We're running a remote model if staff want to come in because it's more comfortable, there is better Wi-Fi, their supplies might be there, etc., they're welcome to come into the building. And if they want to work from home because that's more comfortable for a variety of reasons, they can do that as well.
Okay, yeah, because that was something that I did receive feedback from in the spring and also recently about somebody mentioned that, you know, they may have spouses who are working from home, and so multiple people working from home might be difficult. And so the environment might be because there were, just to recognize, there were a handful of people who did feel that coming onsite was okay for them. So they wouldn't be not permitted to do so if they were, if they were so inclined.
That's correct.
All right, Mary?
I had a couple of just sidelines if I could. So Brian, I know that the new director of the Boys and Girls Club is really trying to figure out how she can help and the parent side comes because none of the none of the plans are unfortunately helping the parents much. And I know it's all about the students, it's all about the staff and that, keeping everybody healthy and safe. But if we can really reach out to the Boys and Girls Club and even to Lois Cohen for the Excel program and even, you know, the preschool program and that to see how we can help parents during this really difficult time, because they they have to work, and there are single parents that, you know, they bring in the, you know, the money. So that's number one. And I had mentioned this to you before we came online, but my my other main big concern is the students that are free and reduced meals and just, you know, that population that, you know, this, unfortunately, this may be one of those times that the inequity is going to, you know, really separate students and how successful they are. So whatever we can do to to help that, I would greatly appreciate. And the third thing was just a comment that I had made that I heard a comment from one parent of a high school student who said it would be great if you could just, and I know you had planned on doing this, so I just want to bring this up of having a couple of more of the Zoom meetings maybe geared toward the high school or to the flower or to the because this one parent said that, you know, she participated in the Zoom meetings, but it seemed as though all the questions were coming from the elementary school parents. So if you could just put that on your radar, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Jessica?
Just quick question in regards to, you're mentioning prioritizing high-risk students and students who might need a little extra help. Having been out from spring, we might have some new kiddos who weren't on the radar or who we we wouldn't think need to be prioritized. So who should those who should those parents be reaching out to to ask for that help or to see if their child should be prioritized in this first phase? That be you or Mr. Ferrante, or is there someone specific we can direct them to or that they can reach out to on their own?
If it's a parent of a special education student, they can certainly reach out to Mr. Ferrante. And I think he and his team with the team chairs will be looking at the the students that they know and what their specific needs are to determine who will and will, you know, who will be able to come in in that first tier.
And then if it's a high risk for another means, should they reach out to you or?
They can reach out to, yes, they can start with me.
Okay, thank you.
Evelyn?
So we just had this conversation through a, it's like a national webinar on school reopening related to specifically, it was technically around children with medical complexity, but it was a larger conversation with the American Academy of Pediatrics, and this guy that's having all these sorts of conversations around the country. He's a very nice guy, by the way. And what came up through Family Voices National, and it seemed to be a great consideration for anyone, not just for children with that have special needs, students with special needs, but to consider right now, to consider what asking, and I think this could really be and I don't know exactly what this looked like, but what are the top three goals for that student? So parents thinking about it, talking with teachers about that, like really considering so that you're able to focus in on some more of the immediate and understand from the the parents when we were talking about like the fact that everyone's so stretched and that this is stretching us all to and beyond what are what we thought was our bandwidth and capacity. And it just, it just kind of was an elegant way to kind of consider how to work together in this and and try to address the best we can. And I know that's something even I'd like to consider for immediately, I was like, that could be really good, as I'm trying to figure out how the heck I get my nine-year-old to actually pay attention when I have to work. And he's supposed to be doing his, so and having that opportunity with his teacher to be able to to just kind of talk a little bit about that would and I I understand that that's being considered in the first week, create create those connections. And I understand that that will also be considered in relation to any any child with support needs. And so I really appreciate that. And I think creativity is going to be paramount, and I already hear some of that occurring and consideration when it's, if teachers feel like they could go to someone's home even, and the parent's good, and they go outside, I'm not saying that's to be required, but I just think that kind of creativity, I'm sure, is going to pop up all over. And the last thing I just wanted to ask about was if we, is this vote, just to be clear in implications as things stand right now, Desi, has they said on the state level that we would not, if we, by voting to go 100% remote right now, that we would not be able to participate, kids, children will not be able to participate in sports? Students can't participate in sports?
Brian, do you want to work, do you want?
I don't, MIAA has not even voted yet on whether or not there will be sports. And they, and the commissioner made a comment, but then stepped that back. So I would say that's not the case at this point.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to, that would be a good thing to know just for people to be aware of if that were part of the deal.
I mean, I think the only thing that, like, funding-wise is like an issue because like there's been, you know, obviously, the political piece where if you don't go onsite, you might not get funding at the federal level. But obviously, if we go onsite, we, it costs more. So I mean, I know we've tried to keep that piece out of the equation in determining, you know, health and safety implications, but that does, it's always in the back of the conversation. I think there's the subtle you know, passive-aggressive digs or try to motivate people or sway people on their decisions, but
But aren't we now too, we're using their metric, we're we're yellow, so we have the right to choose remote. So I think that we would be excluded from that regardless, because we're we're following the metric that was provided to us. So
For federal, federal aid, if there's federal aid that hasn't yet been voted on, I know that there's like, yeah, the Republican bill predominantly has, like, is contingent, some of the funding that they're trying to pass would be contingent if you're onsite or not. Which is unfortunate, but that's that's how it's being phrased right now.
Okay, we good? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation provided to us by Superintendent Haas.
Second?
I will second.
Well, second. Three second? All right, roll call vote.
Wait, the only thing I just wanted to add before discussion, before we vote, sorry, is just to reinforce that that's not a firm six weeks, that if we were to reassess, that their possibility earlier is being considered.
Technically, we could reassess tomorrow.
Okay. But I just think as we, I just want to make sure that that would be my, that's my kind of like only I don't say hold back, but like really want to reinforce that this is an ongoing reassessment. We're not just going to reassess it in six, six weeks, that we're we're doing this, so it could be sooner.
I I think you get a rationale for why they were considering six weeks. I think for this first phase, I agree about following the metrics. And that it's going, that we do make sure that it's being assessed at at very regular intervals that are long enough to see trends and but short enough to allow us to be responsive and be able to get to the ultimate goal we all have, paying back as safely as possible, also getting everyone back in to be able to be educated for all people involved. But the the other piece of that is that we're going to be then getting into the flu season, and by all accounts that I've heard from experts, we're going to see an uptick. So I would like, so that's my one concern with like thinking that we're doing well and moving into things sooner than the four weeks, and then we we immediately end up pulling back. That was part of like That was part of my consideration was we're going to go start, stop, stop, start, stop, and as soon as there's someone who needs to be quarantined, then that whole class is quarantined. And all the, all the disruptions that we're going to have and anyways, so that's my discussion.
All right, so we've had a motion, three seconds, some more discussion. Now can I do a roll call vote?
Quick.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy, yes. So, thank you all very much. And thank you, Brian, to you and your staff for making our lives a little easier tonight because we have all been dreading this. And I would also like to thank all of, I'm sorry?
I said we are.
I'd like to thank all.
No, I was going to say, none of us have been sleeping very well.
Yeah, no, nope, we haven't.
Lots of concealer.
And I want to. Oh, I want to thank all of the parents for all of your input and the emails that we've been receiving for, for pleas for both sides for each plan. And I want you to know, we took all of your thoughts and wishes and, and statements into consideration, and this was not easy. And, and we really hope that you can just stand beside us and support us and trust that we are doing the right thing by your children, and we will do whatever we can to help you and support you in, you know, going into this new school year because it's going to take all of us to do this together. So, thank you.
Yep, kind of, kind of make some good remote plans now.
Yep, it is. And I think, you know, now we can dedicate, focus all of our time, energy and resources on making a fabulous remote program for all of our students.
And Brian, you mentioned that there was going to be training for parents as well to help with that along that process. I know we had some email, but I just want to make sure that's highlighted for the community as well, that.
We'll have training for parents related to the platforms, Google Classroom and Google in general. So we'll have training for parents, we'll have training for students, and obviously professional development for staff as well.
And well, also, there was mention of toolkits as well, correct, to send home of kids. So it's more multisensory and it's not, we're not just going to be sitting on screens all day, it will be.
Correct.
Yeah, we will get creative and things outside the box to make it a fabulous, as can be, remote plan.
Yes, yes. We will do the reimagining of education that Commissioner Riley said he was going to do in, back in June. All right, well, now we're going to go on to a less interesting part of the evening and members' comments. So, I'll go in reverse alphabetical order. Natasha?
The only thing that I, I know, the budget subcommittee meeting, so that got rescheduled, so that is going to be next week. And Colleen, you posted that, right? Or is it being posted tomorrow?
If you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Yep, go, go with that. So that will be tomorrow. I know that Mr. Ferrante is working with CPAC to schedule a meeting there as well in the next couple of weeks, or they will be reaching out of some connection, but that's also on the horizon. And Mr. Ferrante, thank you very much for your already collaboration with, with reaching out to CPAC and, and bringing those conversations forward. They're so, they're so important, and obviously everyone is at a different place in their comfort level and how they can support their kid at home. Because the reality is that parents are not specialists, you know, and, and that's the struggle a lot of sped parents have, they're not speech and language, you know, to provide the supports there. And so I think there is going to need a lot of handholding along the way to, to make this a success to support those families. And so I thank you for that, that leadership. I think in advance because I know that you're going to, you're the right guy for the job. So I look forward to, to those conversations. And, and Lydia, just actually for you, I, on the other day, I wanted to thank you. I know you went before the Board of Selectmen and, and shared a recommendation that was asked of the school committee, a recommendation that was only asked last week of the school committee, and I really appreciate you presenting that. I will say that I was not happy with the way it was received, but I know understandably that since there have been some other conversations, but I just wanted, I, I felt like you needed more support that potentially you were not really prepared for under the circumstances. And, and so I apologize if I wasn't able to do that in the moment for you, but.
I didn't even expect you to be there, but I was thankful that you were.
Yeah, I, I just want to, you know, our job and just to, to reinforce for the, you know, our job is to advocate for the schools in the best way we can in consideration of whatever money we're, we're given. And there was some disheartened insinuations that the school, the school department is always reaching for dollars and is in some way grasping when there's money available. I resent that implication as a school committee member. School departments are, schools are underfunded continuously every year. So when we talk about, we are short money and then we're being asked to cut $265,000 additionally, and we plead for some relief, I would hope that would warrant a conversation of options of how we could work together to see what else can be considered and not that we are rejected or chastised in a public manner because we're asking for help. So, you know, thinking about what we will have to make decisions in the future, I know that we have more difficult decisions down the road, but that $265,000 represents jobs, that represents education to our students that we are obligated to provide. And, and so I just want to just kind of leave it there that I would hope that we can reassess a possibility of some relief that our schools deserve under the circumstances.
Thank you. Anything else, or shall we go to Beth Lynn? Beth Lynn?
I guess the things that occurred to me as, as, well, one, we're going to be having our communications, some committee meeting next week, so that will be very good to get going with that because the very next thing that comes to mind is, I think we're going to be doing all discussion around communication related specifically to reentry and remote learning, but communication will clearly be key moving forward, and I appreciate the way that communication has been happening, and I, and I look forward to that continuing. And I, I'm going to guess that for our community that the forums would continue to be useful as we, we, we are going along. So I know you already have some further plan, and there were suggestions, some suggestions for those, particularly as we're trying to ensure that we're taking care of folks the best we can with a remote. And then I, I don't think, I think I, we've already said what there is to say. I, I feel for anyone for whom this is, I would say this is the hardest decision that I've, I've had to vote upon and consider. And we will do the best we can, and I hope that we will continue to do that as best we can together. And that does not mean that everyone's going to be happy, but we will continue to, to work together, like to do the best we can and not, not stop. And that dedication I am very grateful for as well, that's it.
Thank you. Jessica?
I agree with, with Beth Lynn on that. I just add personally, like I'm, I'm a single, I'm, I was raised by a single mom, so I understand those, the hardships that any single parent is going to have to endure with this. I'm, we're a two-working family in my household, so I have no idea personally what I'm going to do in the fall. I might not be able to work anymore, which isn't really an option, but it's, we're all in this together and this decision was not made lightly. It was, you know, taking, I'm a huge social justice person who cares very much about equity in education and in life, and a lot of these inequities that are being highlighted were there far before COVID, and now we can't ignore them anymore. And they're really being brought to light and they're really hard, difficult conversations that are being had all around. And that could potentially be the silver lining of all of this. So please know, if, if we could tomorrow get kids back in school, I know the value of that. I have two children who are on IEPs. I, I need them in school there. I've, I've seen one of my child regress, children regress significantly over the summer. This is an issue that needed to be based on safety and needed to be based on having an all-in approach, and we didn't have that. And I think that in all honesty, I disagree that it was based on fear from the teachers. I think it was based on compassion, empathy and consideration. I don't think our teachers are afraid. I think that they are smart, intelligent people who care so deeply about our children and we're not willing to put them at risk and themselves at risk and our community at risk. So that is all, I'll get off my soapbox, but if anybody wants to reach out directly to any of us, we're always here to answer questions and give you more background in regards to, you know, how this all came full circle and how our, you know, mindset ended up and landed where it did in our vote tonight. So, most transparent person you will meet, so feel free to ask me anything.
Thank you, Jessica. Mary?
Just a couple of things, going back to the, the presentation that you did, Lydia, at Board of Selectmen, I'm so sorry that you were put in that position, and I did want to thank though Brian and Wayne and Lydia for putting together our, our reconsideration letter to ask the selectmen to, to help us with that deficit of the 265 because we don't even know if that's what we're going to need. We may end up being deficit of a lot more. That was based on the information that was available, but it was a great spreadsheet that Wayne put together, best of bill, the best of our ability and that. So I just wanted to thank you guys for that. Also, you and I have a part, and Wayne and Brian have a policy subcommittee meeting next week. Get ready, you guys, there's a lot of, there's a lot of policies to be changed.
I counted, and it's 83 policies.
Oh my gosh, so anyway, the third one was, we've got the ad hoc safety, the next ad hoc safety committee because that's another group of incredible number of people that are, again, trying to figure out all of the protocols so that when we do get back into the schools, that everyone's going to be safe. So our next meeting is on August 20th, and we've got a school committee meeting that night, so I'll be able to bring you up to date at that one.
And a workshop.
And we're, oh yeah, we've got a workshop.
And the workshop.
We're all going to be brain dead again, but anyway, and the, the last one, it segues on what Jessica said, it's, it's interesting, what has been brought up, brought to the forefront is how important and how many tentacles there are to educating our children. And if that hasn't been brought up to everybody, you know, obviously we're here for the, the kids and to, you know, to get them the best education we can, but the tentacles of, it's basically the, the basis of our economy. And I'm hoping that people are really seeing that out of this comes a silver lining that, you know, to, to Natasha's point, that schools will be, will start to be better funded, that really, everybody will really appreciate what our school systems do. And I always say, schools either make or break communities, truly believe that, and, and I really feel like this is bringing it to light. So, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. I'm fried. So, oh, I do have one piece of news. So we, we do have a mask workshop next Thursday prior to our school committee meeting. Dorothy was not available to talk to me until tomorrow. So once I get all that information from her, I will pass that along. And.
It's goals, right? Aren't we supposed to be doing goals or?
Yep, goals, communication protocols, and, I'm sorry?
Strategic plan?
District plan?
Or strategic?
Strategic plan, yeah, yep, yep, all of that. So I just, I'm going to talk to her about what we need to do in preparation for this meeting because it's a whole different process now that we're doing it remotely rather than in person. We can't write stuff on the whiteboard and we can't do sticky notes all over the room, so. So I will get that information to you. And I want to thank all of you for the work that you've put into and into making this decision and also the support that you guys have been giving me because it has been a lot of work. And, and I really, I really value how well we, we work together as a team. It's, you know, it's just, it's so important and it's important to our schools, so. And that is it, unless anyone has anything else to say? Jeff or Jennifer?
I think that's it for tonight. Oh, Jennifer, me. Jennifer? The only thing I have to say is that I got this letter, I got a, a copy was sent to me of a superintendent letter like asking community to consider advocacy towards, for the government to help, but I mean, I just think that it may be appropriate, so I thought I would share that with you, Brian, to just take a look at.
Okay. Was it from the situate or?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could also be part of our, our communication thing because we had talked about doing communication messaging and advocacy in that, so that could also be a good time to talk about that, too.
Brilliant.
All right.
Okay, that's it.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It seems like it's too early. I'd like to hang out for a little bit longer, so.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second that.
Any discussion that we should hang out longer? Question, thank you to everyone that joined.
Yes, thank you all. I don't know how many, what was the highest count, was it 100 and, or 250 or?
257 was the high number I saw, yeah.
Yeah, go Maynard, thank you for joining.
Colleen, what was the highest number?
266.
Nice.
Wow, I think we broke a record. Okay, so, I have, I have an amendment and a second, and now I'm going to do roll call so we can get out of here. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy?
Lydia, yes.
Yeah, oh, wait, I forgot to say yes. Yes, yes. All right.
Thank you all.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Hi.
Thank you.